Well, I got nine o'clock. Being the current chair, soon to be passed, I've called a meeting to order if you can stand up and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on our agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, first thing is to appoint a new chair and vice chair. What are the wishes of the board?
Well, make a motion to appoint Kip Brunder as our new chair for 2016.
I will second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? We don't do this every time, so it seems a little odd. Just once a year.
Yeah, we go through a rotation.
Rotation, so we rotate chairs every year. So, Chair, you have the chair.
Thank you very much Vance, thank you for your leadership and work last year as the chair, and now I would look for a nomination for the vice chair.
Nominate, Mark people.
Second.
Second, any other discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign, motion carries. Congratulations, Mark.
I was gonna congratulate you, Mr. Chair.
All right, we'll move on to the 2016 Board Meeting Calendar, should be one in our packet. We've discussed it several times at work sessions and whatnot.
I'd move approval over the calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
There's one part, the Invision 2020 Rail Group, I agree, but I got information from Drew that says they're, it is not no more, they don't have a rail group for Invision 2020.
Oh, as far as the committee assignments?
Yeah.
We're on the calendar.
To convene in the future, they might call it again, but they said, it's one of those, you know, a whole bunch of them went away actually, about four of those Invision 2020 committees just disappeared completely, for now.
Okay, well, we'll deal with that later.
We're on the calendar.
We're on the calendar.
This is just the calendar.
Yep, so anybody have any conflicts?
Right now, we're on the calendar.
Yeah.
You jumped to the calendar instead of assignments.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right Vance, I did.
Yeah, I guess you're right, yeah.
We're on the board.
Yeah, we're...
What are we on?
Calendar. Assignments, yeah.
We're still talking about the calendar.
Yep, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign, motion carries.
I didn't look at it.
Board committee assignments.
Here, I have to listen better and you, you know.
I have a trouble with mine.
Your wisdom of being a chair.
Yeah, we had the discussion about the Invision 2020.
Any, I don't see anything else, I think they're all set.
I will, I will move the assignments with the Invision 2020 Rail Group taken out, Jesse.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Yep, just have a couple items, you can take another one off of mine on there that's on the, on the list we have in our packet. I was removed from the Minra, you know, the Minnesota River Area Agency on aging, about four months ago by Region Nine, and so I'm no longer serving on that Minra group, they've separated from Region Nine and they're a standalone committee now, or group, I guess, 501(c)(3), and have moved into the old Union Building down on Broad Street, so they're sort of reorganizing. And then, just for like language purposes, on the, I belong to two different Towards Zero Death groups, one of them, what they're trying to do, the state is trying to have each county somehow have their own, what they call Safe Roads Committee. So it's, in a sense, it's somewhat separate, but it's still attached to our South Central region, but each county, a lot of them now have their own, what they call Safe Roads. So it'd be Blue Earth County Safe Roads Committee, and then behind that, we could put TZD. So it'd be Blue Earth County Safe Roads Committee, and then behind it, you could put the TZD just to kind of clarify, it's attached to it. And then the other one is, is just the South, is a MinDOT, that's MinDOT's South Central Towards Zero Death Steering Committee, and so that's, and that could be TZD Steering Committee if you want, but...
And that one is different than the South Central Towards Zero Death Committee?
No, okay, there's one that's, that's our own Blue Earth County Safe Roads.
Correct.
And that could just be Blue Earth County Safe Roads with TZD.
Got that.
The other one is MinDOT Towards South Central SC.
And that's on the list?
Yeah, yeah.
So you're okay with that?
Those are two separate ones.
Okay, so I'll add the Blue Earth County one, but the other one can remain as is?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Thanks.
And then one other request I'd like to ask, since I'll be on it for the next eighteen months, the acronym is CCATF, and it's a Region Nine Clamp Climate Change Adaptation Task Force. So it's Region Nine, just R9, Climate Change Adaptation Task Force, and that's, that's a grant that we've been given with federal and state dollars for the next eighteen months just to study, not to mitigate, but to look at ways of how we can adapt to regardless of which way the weather goes, if it's changing or not, what would, what's the impact, what would that do? And so it's kind of, they're doing this all over the country right now, it's part of our, actually, I think it came out of the Homeland Security, a lot of these funds, because it does impact our health. And then, of course, we know Commissioner Stroenbergh has been very active with NACO recently more, and, and is on our Rural Action Caucus, so he should be our, I think, our primary involved with that, but I'd like to be listed as secondary on there, I don't know how you want to do that, board, but an alternate, alternate or secondary, whatever.
Alternate.
Okay, because I mean, I'm on the board, I mean, they listed me on there.
Well, you're on, you're on Rural Action Caucus.
Yeah.
You're, you know, you're listed on, through NACO, on Rural Action, so that would only make sense.
But you, I think you're our primary on that one though Vance, so, but I'll, I'll try to go to as much of it as I can, I just don't know if I can do as much travel maybe. I'm trying to think if there's any...
Anything else?
I think that's, MRB is gone finally, we just finished up all that business.
Okay, so we can make a friendly amendment to the changes?
Yes, okay. Is that already, did you accept the friendly amendment?
You have all that Jesse?
I've got it.
Okay, any other discussion? Anybody else have anything else to add or remove? Okay, all in favor of the Board Committee Assignments, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Commissioners Committee Reports, Drew, why don't you start?
Okay. It'll be shorter because we had the holidays, you know.
I know, but we were busy with holiday stuff.
Yeah, well, our last board meeting was December 15th, and of course, that afternoon, we had our annual Board, sort of a holiday event where we, we opened up the doors here and have a little reception for all the employees of our county, and that was nice to see some of the new, new employees and some of the ones that have been here for many years come and just have a nice holiday greeting, we were all there, all the board and a lot of our staff. Thursday 17th, I met with our Valak Rep, Greg Burkhardt, and then a lot, some of it was personal, but some of it was also just trying to find out what kind of things they offer, he's, he actually is more of a financial planner than some people are, so you can ask him a lot of questions related to financial planning if, if the employees want to, and then I, on that same day, quite a few of us attended the Public Works Farewell for Dean Ayers, remember? And Dean has been with us, well, in the Parks Department, I know it's like, I think it's close to thirty, maybe twenty-seven or twenty-eight years in the Parks Department, and then he had about eight or nine years or more, just in the county, so a lot of years with the county, and then after that, we had a farewell event for, upstairs for Patty O'Connor, she's led our taxpayer services for many years, and, and was it thirty-eight years, Bob, do you remember?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven years, and most of us were all there. And then Friday the 18th, I did go to my Region Nine Climate Change Task Force, we had it at the Profidium Place Bank, I can't think of the gentleman's name that works at the bank there, they have a community room, and he's very curious about these things too, and so we, we met there and we talked about the future, sort of timelines that we have for getting this all completed within the next eighteen months, we are looking at health assessments and how, when climate changes, how it impacts their community health in our region, and so we've set up a work plan for that. That same day, I was Santa's helper at Luther Memorial Home, like I am every year, and it was fun with all the folks that live there and their families, that's over in Medelia. Let's see, I don't know about you guys, but I was unlucky enough to pick up that sinus lung infection thing over the holidays, and it lasted about a full week, and it was not fun, but, so that was kind of part of my Christmas, but we flew out to Los Angeles for a wedding, and my nephew works for the City of Los Angeles, he is working for Joel Buscanel, there's fifteen councilmen on there, city council there, and each one represents about 200,000 people.
Wow.
So it's pretty, pretty interesting, he's a deputy legislative representative there, and let's see here, volunteered at Holy Grounds over the holidays a couple of times, and met with Bob Meyer yesterday afternoon, our administrator, just to go over a lot of our packet items, and then think about the new year, and staff changes and things that have occurred and that are happening this year, and then last night, I, we're trying to reinvigorate a club called the Optimist Club, and anybody's welcome to join that club, it's just starting up again, and so we had about a two hour meeting last, or hour and a half meeting, I'd say, last night, and that's where we do activities and fundraising and things to help support area youth programs. Our next fundraiser will be a Boleathon, and a lot of the proceeds are going towards the Reach, which is through LSS, you know, for at-risk youth in our area, homeless kids that are just flopping around the community, so, and I believe that, that ends mine, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Drew.
Will?
Yep, okay, of course Drew mentioned employee reception and Dean and Patty's retirement on the 18th, I went to St. Paul, attended a residential PACE discussion group up there as part of the Rural Minnesota Energy Board, we have the, the PACE program now where we make low-interest loans that are paid back on property taxes to businesses that want to update energy efficiency, and we're now talking about doing it for residences, so that was a, a good discussion. Then on the 28th, I met with a landowner at Garden City who had a severe ravine erosion thing going on from county to 17, so we, Craig and I met with him, talked about options to get that fixed, and that brings us up to today for me.
Okay, thank you Will. Mark?
Oh my goodness, I can't say.
Gotcha, okay, Mark.
Yeah, we, we didn't, as everybody, we had, of course, our board meeting and then, and the holiday party, and the next morning, along with Kip, we, we were Santa's helpers in getting the sheratri gifts from Madison East over to the Community Service Armory, the new armory that we've been doing, and it's like the...
Thanks for that.
Thirty, yeah, I think it's thirty years plus now that we've been doing that, actually, our company's been doing the actual, being their sleigh, I guess, but Kip's and Kim's been involved for quite some time, and that's, that's a real worthwhile effort, appreciate everybody that's helped with that in terms of gifts for the sheratri, yeah. December 17th, I had a Partners for Affordable Housing meeting and close out the year, and of course, we're gearing up for Pedal Past Poverty fundraiser on February 27th, a Saturday, so...
So when you want to give the money, make sure you give it to me instead of Mark.
Why, did he lose it last time?
No.
I'm on his team.
He's already taken, yeah, all my, yeah, but I'm glad to have again Commissioner Vance on my team, so...
So if I joined your team, we'd have to post every event?
No, because you're there at different times.
No.
You'd be there at different times.
Yeah, you'd be at different times. And it'd only be the one event, so...
Okay, okay, so I make sure we're following open meetings.
Yeah, we could, you could, yeah.
But you'd have to try to get money from the same people they try to get money from too, so...
Um, then, let's see, yeah, then I guess, yeah, that pretty much concludes my report, yes, family activities, my son's up, was up from Georgia with his spouse and grandson, and yes, as the county attorney said, the little grandson stole the shows.
That's right.
You're Ranger or something?
Yeah, yes, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Vance?
All right, well, we already talked about the Employee Holiday Party, that was a good time, on the 16th, I had a call-in to NACO, and then on the 17th, we had, let's see, well, we had a holiday party at the Department of Public Safety in Mankato that was invited to come to at noon, and then, of course, Dean's and Patty's retirement, and that evening, I went to a, went to the Blue Earth County Historical Society for John Cross, and talked about his new book, and had a book signing there, that was, that was good. On the 18th, I had All Seasons Arena meeting, on the 22nd, I had Airport Commission, and you know, I think that was about it.
Okay.
You know, Christmas and New Year's, it kind of, a lot of your meetings get canceled for December, so...
Yep, all right, thank you Vance, we're coming up on 9:15, but I really only have a couple of things to add since everyone else has kind of hit all the events we had with the retirements and the Christmas events, but I did have a Board of Adjustments Christmas Supper, and we had actually everybody there but one person from the Planning, Zoning, and the Board of Adjustments, so, it was a nice turnout, we had a nice visit, I thanked them on behalf of the Board for all their hard work and their service and their, and the committee assignment for us, and I think they appreciated that. Then I had MVAC, we had a training on some, kind of the legalities of a board, what your responsibilities are, it's a training we have to do every, starting to do every year for these nonprofits, it was very informative, it was about ninety minutes, and then the next day after that, I had a South Central Workforce, and we just did some finalize, some, got some questions finalized by MVAC for doing the At Youth Employment Program this year, so, looks like everything's moving forward with that, and then Commissioner Stroenbergh and myself had the holiday lunch with the staff to show our appreciation for all their hard work and all their efforts throughout the year in trying to keep us in line and straight and organized.
I didn't put that down, did I?
You didn't put that down, so I will mention that, so, but we do appreciate the, the staff we have at the admin level and, and...
That was a lot of fun, too.
It was, and, and I met with Bob yesterday to visit a little bit about the agenda and what we had coming up today, so that brings me up to the end of my report, and we will hear from the county attorney, Pat McGrimmer, Pat.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. I did provide some updated through the year-end information, as you know, the information's posted online Thursday before the, this board meeting, so this is information through year-end, so, give you a better idea of the caseload numbers, and I will be breaking out some additional information in the year-end report that I hope to have finished sometime this month. But just to give you an idea, in pretty much every category, we are up, and so that is a caseload increase not only for our office, but for the Sheriff's Office and Human Services and Corrections and everybody within the system, so if there's any specific questions that you have, I'd be more than happy to answer those questions, but I'll provide more detail in some of the, in a, in a year-end report. As you see, the Controlled Substance Crimes continue, that's where the, the biggest increase has been in our filings this year, so, and as of the first, the two former Assistant City Attorneys are now Blue Earth County employees, we do have the position posted for the third misdemeanor prosecutor, and hope to have that person started in the relatively near future. So, sir?
That's what I was gonna ask you about, is that, are some of these reflective of any of the recent changes that have occurred up in the office at all, with the new misdemeanor?
Nope, I will keep those numbers separately because from a statutory requirement, it requires obviously Board Approval to enter into the prosecution agreement with the city, and I will keep those numbers separate to provide information not only to you, but to the Mankato City Council and city officials.
Okay, and then you, did you state that, that, that the reason is mostly related to drug activity?
That's been the largest increase in our, in our felony caseload, has been related to the drug crimes, as you'll see that, you know, last year we had 247, the year before 246, and this year we're up to 311, so that's about a, a 20% increase, a 20, 25% increase in our caseload in that respect.
And juveniles are up too, quite a bit.
Juveniles are up quite a bit, some of that information with respect to the juveniles, we, at the beginning of the year, and I'll, I'll cover this information more in detail in the year-end report, but we redid the juvenile diversion program and the process in which that flows through our office and Corrections, so there's going to be a little bit of an increase in caseload number there because of how that change in process has occurred.
The data collection has changed or something?
It's a shifting of, of resources, and there's more and more, it, it was truly a function that should have been coming out of the county attorney's office, and that's the way that I set it up for 2015, and that's the way that I wanted to do it because that's the way that statutory, that should have been done in the past.
I was just curious, especially on the juvenile side of it, does, you know, does Human Services get these too at all, or do they get sent to them, or do they, are, are Human Services departments, do they concede these stats on the juvenile side, or?
No, they're, I mean, they're, they're shared with the public, just like they're shared with you, it's the information that's online, and so, I mean...
That could see where that could set up some programming for setting goals for reductions.
Right.
You know, I don't know, it's nice to see the stats, but what can we do about it?
Well, there's various things that, first of all, was, was the change in procedures and processes in the juvenile diversion program, and secondly, was the, starting the truancy intervention program, and I'll break those numbers out actually, a little bit further in the year-end report, but you'll see where it appears that truancies have gone up, well, the actual truancy filings went down by two, instead of, you know, so, we're taking a more proactive role in the county attorney's office and going out and, and to the schools and meeting with these people, and meeting with the parents and the kids in the truancy, because truancy is again, one of the leading indicators of future criminal behavior, so there's been a, a increase in district enrollment in the District 77, which is essentially from the school standpoint, our largest client, so we have been undertaking some of those in, another program that, that we started was the prioritization of prosecution of anything that occurs on school property, and with the assistance of the courts, I did get the judges to agree and court administration to agree that once the case is, is, first of all, it's treated priority with law enforcement, then once it comes into our office, it's out the door within 36 hours.
Oh.
And the court sets the matter on for a hearing within the, the next available court date, which is, at the most should be ten days, in most given situations, so we're dealing with, with those school issues and with the juvenile issues differently than we have in the past, and so we have been dealing with those issues differently to help take care of some of these concerns, because again, that's the focus of where part of my first year has been, is in the juvenile area.
And I would think that it's an indicator for, if Human Services was to look at those numbers, or any individual that comes up on your radar, it could be an indicator, it's not necessarily true, but...
Well, it, it can be an indicator, right.
There's a family issue that could be deeper, you know, that they're not dealing with, something's falling apart in the family, or there's some other issues that need to be...
Right, and, and again, that's a, that's a resource issue, because from a true truancy progress, or, truancy in its finest form and at the basic level is considered a child in need of protection or services.
Oh, okay.
And that's treated differently in the, in the juvenile justice system than any other juvenile filing, so, but again, that's a resource issue for Human Services to be able to do those things, and, and thus far, they haven't been able to.
They haven't.
So the reason to get this through within 36 hours, is that to make more of an impact with the juveniles?
Yes, it is, I mean, and, excuse me, Commissioner Stroenbergh, you'll understand this as a, as a prior community liaison officer with the schools, is, is, it's the immediacy of the consequences and to make sure that the kids understand that this is something that's taken seriously and deal with those issues sooner rather than later, because if, you know, it's bad enough that we have to wait ten days or longer, but if we would wait two, three months, you know, bring the kids in, it doesn't have the same impact, so that was the, the idea behind the program, and again, even though the judicial system is backlogged in, in many respects, the courts did agree to put those and treat those cases with priority, and we've done that, and we've had very good feedback from all the schools in the county.
Thank you. All right, hey, Pat, any other questions for Pat?
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to the Regional Railroad Authority Meeting, I'll let Vance call that meeting to order.
I'll call the meeting of the Regional Railroad Authority to order?
Mr. Chair, we maybe should recess the regular board meeting.
Yeah, I'm sure we have a motion to do that first.
It's the first meeting of the year, we're gonna...
Second. Got a first and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Now, call the meeting of the Regional Railroad Board to order.
Like to nominate Kip Brunder then as the, or do you want to look at the agenda?
Appointment officers is first.
Yep, yep. We've already called to order, so...
Called to order, and you nominated Kip?
Well, I move all, why don't you just move all of them?
Just move them all as a group?
We did them separately last year.
Did we do them separately?
We did, we, we did motions on each position, but voted just once, so, you know, if you'd like to do it that way, that would be fine.
This is a group that meets really a lot.
So we're doing a point of order here, so we want to have Kip Brunder, all nominated as chairman.
I'll second, and, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now you get to go.
All right, I take a nomination for vice chair.
Nominate, Mark people.
Do I have a second? Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign, take a nomination for secretary.
Nominate Drew Campbell.
Thank you very much, I'll accept the nomination.
I'll second, but I, yeah, I thought we were having one vote on all of them.
I know, but the chair is taking order here.
Geez, okay.
Any, any other discussion on secretary, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign, motion carries. Treasure?
I'll nominate Will Burris.
Second.
Any other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign, motion carries. Executive Director?
Nominate Bob Meyer.
Second.
Any discussion?
If you want to do that, okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign, motion carries. Agenda review, anything to add?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
I've got one, just one request, that I could have 30 seconds or, or at the most a minute to say a few words.
On behalf of the Railroad Authority, okay, I guess I would grant that.
We want to know what you're gonna say about, yeah.
Let's approve the minutes, and then we'll hear from Drew, we might, we might have minutes that last more than a minute.
I would move the minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the minutes?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign, Drew?
I'd just like to say that, and I think Vance would be in concurrence with this, you know, even though the, the Invision 2020 isn't really have an active committee right now about rail, what do they call it, when you're moving the bodies all over the place, you know, we don't really have transit.
Transit.
Transit, we don't have much in this area, in Southern Minnesota, we don't have any, and, so I would like to just say that I think you're gonna see in the next year or two some more discussions about that, that we're gonna see planning possibly for looking seriously at what the costs are gonna be for adding rural... at what the costs are gonna be for adding rural railroad transit for people. And it could be just from the centers like Rochester, Mankato, and some of the bigger towns, I don't know, but I just think it's something that's needed. It came up at our discussion meeting with Vance, was that when the Commissioner of Transportation, Zelli, was down here for a meeting with Mankato representatives, and, and I think it's, it's almost shameful that we don't have more serious planning for some sort of rail transit in southern Minnesota.
Okay, thank you Drew.
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion items for the railroad authority at this point? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All poll the same sign, motion carries. Now, back to Vance.
Well, we go down to the Economic Development Authority Annual Meeting, and the first thing is the election officers, I need a motion for chairperson.
Nominate Kip Brunder.
Second.
Got a nom, nomination and a second for Kip Brunder as chair of the EBA, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Keep your comments to yourself, vice chair.
Well, I had to, I had to go through something properly the whole way through here, so...
I am looking for nominations, thank you Vance, I'm looking for nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Mark People for our vice chair.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All poll the same sign. Nominations for secretary?
Nominate Drew Campbell.
Thank you very much, I'll accept.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All poll the same sign, motion carries. Treasurer?
Nominate Will Purvis.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All poll the same sign, motion carries. Executive Director?
Robert Meyer is our executive director.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All poll the same sign, motion carries. Agenda review?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, we'll look for a motion to approve the minutes from October sixth, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion, question, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All poll the same sign, motion carries. We will make a motion to adjourn if there's another business for the EBA.
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All poll the same sign, motion carries. Now we reconvene the regular board meeting. And I think we are at about nine-thirty.
Of course.
Yeah.
What we're doing.
So I think we'll just bring Al up at this point, but before, while Al's coming up, I would just like to acknowledge Mr. French in the audience who is coming to visit with us or hear what we have going on at the county, so welcome, Mr. French.
Thanks, it's very interesting. Serious.
That's a good word for it.
That's why there's so many people...
Al and Ryan, come on up.
And, Dick, come on up, Ryan.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Al.
Morning, Ryan.
Beautiful winter day out there.
Yes, another sunny day, we can get some roads melted off today, maybe, on.
Yes, yes. As some of you know, I had my sixty-eighth birthday a couple days ago, and a close friend...
Happy birthday. I didn't know the number, though, I didn't know the number.
Close friend of mine who was a high school classmate, and we went to college, she gave her a second-year birthday card, of course, and I thought she might get a kick out of this.
Who is that guy?
Yeah, I know him.
Did he have hair?
Yes, somewhat.
Some of us are losing ours, though.
I could relate to that, yes. Fifty years have gone by very quickly. Well, several items of business here, consider final approval and payment, five thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars to Icon Constructors for Casa Fourteen Bridge Project.
Motion to approve? I got a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments?
How did that go, Al, was it pretty good?
Well, you know, it was a interesting project, and there were delays in getting the beams, and so we were able to resolve that, we had a claim that we resolved, so we got a good bridge out there, a good settle, good fair settlement, I would recommend we go ahead with it.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All poll the same sign, motion carries.
Okay, and then the agenda here has an error in it, we got the right amount and the right contractor, but rather than Lime Township Bridge, it's the Casa Twenty-Six Madison Lake Main Street Project.
County Twenty-Six.
All, all the paperwork is correct, we're just mislabeled on the agenda.
Which, which one?
Number two on the agenda.
Number two.
Strike Lime Township.
Okay.
And add Casa Twenty-Six Madison Lake.
Okay.
Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? That's the final payment for the, for the front, the main street there, then?
Yes.
Oh, that's, that's a wonderful, we've all been out there to look at it, it's a wonderful project, I know Ryan worked on that too quite a bit, didn't he, you met with those folks out there?
I was visiting with some other people the other day, they're still commenting how much they enjoy it and like it, so, it's a good thing.
It's really nice, I like the way they got the, the trees, and they got the nice old-fashioned lights that are downtown, and I just see nothing but a positive future for that downtown because of the project, actually.
So those are major challenges working on the main street and the business street for a small community, and we've done so in Lake Crystal and Madison Lake and Appleton, there are a number of other projects that need work really in Good Thunder and Burn Center, Pemberton, so...
And it's really important that we do spread out throughout the whole county, you know, there's, there's some comments from the rural areas that everything is done right here in Mankato, which is where most of our population is, but we, we need to make sure that we do, do a fair amount of spreading throughout Blue Earth County, and, and something like that is just so important.
Yeah, I think our sales tax program too added a good balance of projects between the city areas and the rural areas and pavement preservation and bridges and the transit component.
Yeah.
So I think we have worked hard at having a balanced program over the years.
On that project too, I've heard that some, some people pushing for removing county roads going down the main street of a city or something like that, you know, to have it kinda skirt the town or whatever, but in cases like this, didn't this help the city quite a bit with the expenses? Because it's a county road, so we actually picked up the bulk of the expense.
Yes, we paid ninety, ninety percent of the street curb and gutter, about half the storm sewer cost, city picked up the other ten percent, and then the city utilities, the water and the sewer main.
And then each one of the, well, is the city, when you say city, you mean the landowners that also paid then?
Well, we charge the city their share, and then the city can choose how they collect it, through general taxes or through assessments or some combination typically, using their standard policy.
I just know it was reasonable.
Yes.
I looked at some of the property tax assessments that were on the properties there, and they were reasonable.
Right.
For as much construction that went on in that downtown area.
You know, and at times, folks say, well, the county state highway, too much is going to the counties, but it ignores that we do quite a bit of work, we have our system in the small towns and in the city of Mankato, so they are getting funds through our county state aid construction program.
All right, I got a motion and a second on the sixty-six thousand fifty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents to Hal Meyer, who'll take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All poll the same sign, motion carries. Consider cooperative agreement with City of Mankato.
Yes, and this has been in front of us at previous board meeting, previous workshop, we've been working with the City of Mankato staff and arrived at what I think is a good compromise. I did send out an email sketch to help illustrate the agreement yesterday, and basically the concept is, here's Prairie Drive, here's Casa Twelve, city's already constructed Prairie Drive from Highway Twenty-two over to the Prairie Drive Roundabout, and then heading south to the new high school, new junior high. So the road under consideration here is from Prairie Drive to Casa Twelve. And the question has been, can we construct this with the Twelve project so that this link is made more efficient, more cost-effective, will provide better access to the high school and encourage development in this area? And we worked out an agreement where this is not a county highway, but the county could construct it with Twelve, and then the city would reimburse us for a portion of the cost. The agreement basically has reconstruction, right-of-way and engineering costs prorated between the city and the county based on these distances, from Prairie Win over to the east boundary of the Lang parcel, divided by the total length of it. So, that's roughly half the distance, and we don't have detailed engineering or detailed engineering cost estimate for it, but our, our best estimate is that the construction of this whole piece is about six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, the right-of-way about seventy-five thousand, engineering about sixty-four thousand, so the total cost is about seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand. If you split that prorated based on these lengths, that's about three hundred and sixty thousand for the city and four hundred and seventeen thousand for the county. Those numbers will be refined as we have actual engineering stations for these locations, and as we have a more detailed estimate, the city would provide us this cost when we award the contract. So that gets rid of the question about what interest rate should be paid and what, what should be the maximum time before they pay us. They'll pay us that share upfront, actually ninety percent of that share upfront, and then when the contract is finalized out, they would pay the remaining ten percent and an adjustment for the final cost.
Makes sense.
It's probably easier than charging the interest rates and all the stuff we were talking about before.
It simplifies it immensely.
Yeah.
Well, why don't I get a motion on the floor, and then we can discuss it.
So moved.
Second, got a first and a second?
I, you know, I, I really appreciate all the work you did, and I know myself and Kip had intergovernmental meetings and with you involved in talking about this, there was at one time a talk about leaving that small portion as a gravel road.
Yeah.
Which, which really would be a, a shame, and, which is really what, you know, citizens look at us and say, that's a waste of government money. You know, you do all that construction work and you put a road there, only to, two or three years later, tear it all back up again, and that's, that's what, that's when people really look at it, a waste of taxpayers' money. But I think it, it shows our partnership with the city of Mankato, the good work of yourself and the engineers in the city of Mankato to come up with a, a real good plan that's fair for everybody, and, and really for us, Blue Earth County, you know, it helps all our citizens, I mean, citizens of Mankato are citizens of Blue Earth County, and we have to understand that, and it's, it's going to help us, that small portion there is gonna really help people from Eagle Lake, people from the, the northeastern edge of the, you know, coming, coming down, going to the new school, so I, you know, it's a plus-plus, and it's, it's a savings in the long run, it's a savings of taxpayers' money.
Keeps your car cleaner, too.
Yeah, some, some people are...
I got a Jeep.
And sometimes the devil's in the details, right? You know, I mean, we, we talked, Al tried to clarify some of it for me so I could understand the agreement, because it seemed like it was quite a deviation from where we were, you know, before we were going towards, but we're, we'll be responsible, just like with, until it's, until it goes back to the city or goes to the city, annexed into the city, we'll pay for the lighting and that sort of thing too, then, I'm assuming, and...
Yeah, the overhead lighting is included in the street construction cost, just sanitary sewer and the water main isn't. The agreement has the county getting permission from Mankato Township to do the actual construction on their road.
I wanted to ask you that.
Which they will not object to.
No, I know, but is there anything, is there anything that we need to do before that agreement can actually be processed without the township's sign-off on something, or?
Well, I've discussed it with them, and they're very open to the county doing this work and then the city taking over that street.
They want it.
They're very proud of it.
I know, I just didn't know, you know, just procedurally, I just wanna make sure you don't miss something.
So procedurally, what would happen is the county would get written permission from the township, we had their oral permission to rebuild that piece of road, and then the agreement has the city taking the road over as a city street, taking jurisdiction of it when it gets annexed and developed.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay.
The agreement also says that once it's constructed, the city will do the maintenance on it, so they'll be doing, doing the snowplowing and taking care of the street.
Okay.
Even before it's annexed and taken over.
Well, it's my question, who's gonna maintain it, or?
Yeah.
Snowplow and stuff, so...
Yep.
All right, any other questions or comments on this issue? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All poll the same sign, motion carries.
Jeff Johnson, the city engineer, has indicated that...
All right, see ya, bye-bye.
Has indicated that it will go before the city council after January eleventh meeting.
Okay.
So hopefully they will pass that also. All right, well, thank you. Some information items, and I spoke with the chair yesterday about the Garnett Sand and Gravel in Sanger Site, we've received inquiries about the status of it, there hasn't been anything discussed here for some time. The city has gone ahead, and as you know, they entered into an option payment of ten thousand dollars with SMC to secure it, has a possibility to buy it for the next year. The city contracted with Braun for a bathymetric survey of the lakes, to see how deep they are, and they're up to twenty feet deep in some places with some pretty clear water, basically reflecting the elevation of the Blue Earth River through the sand bank. City also completed a Phase One environmental review, just this big report, where they basically reviewed records of public agencies, and they did some onsite review, and they found, well, the old building, they found there's a well, there's a septic system, and there, there was a permitted demolition landfill for a short period of time, so we'd be aware of those things. There may be other things there too, if we were to proceed with this. The other thing that's come up is that the lock-on grants are available for purchasing parkland now, which would be for up to a hundred thousand dollars, fifty percent of the land purchase cost up to a hundred thousand. So, the option price is two hundred and twenty-five thousand, if we were to get that grant, would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand, to be split between the city and the county, according to past discussions, plus sixty-two thousand each, something like that. But somebody has to apply for the grant, and Paul Vogel is making the argument, since the city has done all of this work and they're looking at as a partnership between the city and the county for acquiring the land, it would be reasonable for the county to apply for this grant, we wouldn't do it alone, we would work with the city, the other information for it, so, we can certainly do it within our parks budget, I just would like to see that there's a consensus that we go ahead and apply for that grant.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna be in partnership with the city of Mankato with this park, I've been very clear on that, I think, but if I'm not there, I just said it, but I know the wishes of the board are to own it and operate it, so I, I don't have a problem moving forward with the grant, but I just wanna be clear that I'm, I don't wanna be in partnership, I don't have a problem throwing some money at this, or contributing some money to buy it and secure it, but I certainly don't want a partnership, so...
Okay.
That's just my feelings.
I would echo that myself, I would prefer that the city own it and operate it.
Correct.
And I'm not even excited about throwing any money towards it.
Well, I, I think it's a great piece of property, and it'd be a shame if it went somewhere else other than for public use, I think it's a good spot for just some rustic, you know, the funny thing is, is that we own land on three, no, two sides of this property, maybe three sides, actually, if you really wanna look at it, we count the landing down there on the Blue Earth River, and then we own our Red Jacket Bridge Park right there, and then we also got a good deal on some land across the river, we got a really good deal, since, since we all have been on the board, all five of us voted to buy that land, that was, I don't remember, maybe sixty thousand dollars?
That Sullivan land?
Yeah, and so we spent, we spent about the same amount of money for a nice piece And so, we spent about the same amount of money for a nice piece of land that was probably half this size or a third this size across the river. And that's rustic land and people can hike on it and do what they want to do. It's all self-contained in that region and so it makes sense to me that we would at least preserve it for public use, whether the city wants to get involved or if the county just wants to own it outright. You know, I'd be open to either one. So, but I think it'd be nice to move forward and see if there's some way we can preserve this for public use because of the access, it has nice access for people. And I know brought up land, we've got a lot of county land around throughout the county, but a lot of it's inaccessible. So, this one's at least accessible for people off the river and off the road, both. So, if it isn't too much of a burden, I think it would be a fair price, knowing that it's been appraised at three times what they're willing to sell it to the city and county for.
So, other commissioners?
I, yeah, I think most citizens favor the idea of having it, having the park. I don't really have, you know, I don't have as big a problem with sharing. I think that the city should take, you know, take the bigger role, encourage that, but I think giving some money towards it is fine and if we can work out some sharing thing, I guess that, see how that goes. But, yeah, I think it should, it would work for everybody. It's a good piece of property to have access for the, you know, the citizens of the county and the city.
Yeah.
It really is.
Fans?
It's down to me, isn't it? What's the two-to-two right now?
Well, he has support for the going for the grant.
I absolutely support you going for the grant. My wish is on the park is, you know, it's, I believe there should be something there, I believe, you know, to retain that property for people to be able to use it. I mean, people that want to go hiking through the trails and stuff like that. I'm kind of on the fence as to whether Blue Earth County should be doing it or the city of Mankato. Should we go in as a partnership between the two of us? Well, we do partnerships with the city of Mankato all the time. We've had some that haven't worked out so well, but we, in ninety-nine percent of the time, we work partnerships all the time with the city of Mankato and I think with decent heads up on top, we could figure out a good way to get this whole thing working properly. So, yeah, I think it'd be obviously a good idea to go for the grant.
Yeah, and I, again, I'd like to clarify, I don't have a problem with the grant, applying for the funds. I think, I have a little different perspective of the grant. I think if we get the grant, that should count as our hundred thousand, but that's just my opinion. But I don't have a problem with the grant and I really drew your comments about, I think it should be public space, but I just have a concern entering into a partnership with two different boards, having two different opinions, which should happen to that park. That's my only concern. I don't disagree that we should control it. I disagree with how it should be managed. So, we'll have that discussion later. So, I think you have a consensus to move forward with the grant.
The county owns a lot of property that is not parks. And even owning the property doesn't mean that we have to turn it into a park.
Right.
You know? The problem with, some folks feel that we have to, you know, throw down a parking lot, throw down rest areas and then you're talking hundreds of thousands, if not a million dollars to build a park area, you know? But to have a very rustic area that is just basically for trails and signs posted that there are no, you know, restrooms and stuff like that, that might work.
All right, I think you've got your...
My opinion is if we're going to apply for the grant, we just will say we're going to buy it.
Is that right? Oh, yeah. I'll stand with you.
It is easier to manage without having to go into an agreement, you know, with somebody, but...
I know the feeling is unanimous and that's why I'm proceeding so carefully with it.
I think you've got consensus to buy the, to apply for the grant, or at least some direction.
Consensus but not a vote.
Yeah. Okay, very good. And, you know, just over the weekend, too, I was with some friends in cities over the holidays and one guy mentions that, gee, he'd been to Mankato and ridden on some of the bicycle trails, they had a great time, stayed overnight, and I didn't say a word. And then a couple of days ago, I was walking our dog on the trail behind Amy's Lake and I ran into an older fellow with a cane walking along. I stopped and talked to him for a bit after my dog stopped jumping on him. And he said, he really liked that somebody had plowed this road because it was easier for him to walk on it, he can get out here and enjoy it. And there again, I didn't say anything, I just kind of recorded that as the public does appreciate these things in many different ways.
They do.
Yeah.
They do.
Okay, we'll move on.
Maple, for some months now, and Mr. Maple has been the chair of the Maple Board. We've been working on the Mankato Area Two Thousand and Forty-Five Transportation Plan. So, rather than go through this page by page, why, there have been a couple...
Didn't you read it over the holiday weekend?
Oh, yes, yes.
That old time, I...
It is complete, it's been accepted. It's quite a document, I think it's a very good document. So, a lot of people took part and worked hard on this. We had a very good consultant working with us and this is kind of our guide. It doesn't determine what we do, that's still up to you folks, but it is a guide that will be assistance in getting funding for various projects. Just pass that around. It's also on the website, on the Maple website, which is currently under the Save Mankato website. Okay, status on the County Seventeen or Madison Avenue Hefner Drive intersection. We've asked Brian Lecheck, who was the engineer who did the traffic studies a couple, three years ago, to update those studies now that the Highway Twenty-two roundabouts are in place and traffic volumes have shifted somewhat perhaps. We should have that study back in the end of January and perhaps workshop would be a good time to take a look at that and look at options for Hefner and Seventeen. And just, not a major item, but just, I guess, has indicated that with our maintenance crew as well as construction, we do look around for innovations and if something looks like it has good potential, we try it out, demonstrate it. This was in your packet, I think, and the back of the motor grader, it mounted to the rear with hydraulic lifts to lift it when it's traveling down the road, is a rubber tire compactor. So, here, when they're grading a gravel road, they can smooth the road, which means loose gravel in place, normally allow the rain and traffic to compact that. Here, we're getting a better finish and hopefully holding the gravel in place and a better ride for people because it's being compacted right after the motor grader.
I would imagine that that compaction then would be a nice, even, flat compaction, whereas if you're driving, if you use the traffic on the road, you're going to have the gouge and stuff for the ruts. So, that's, it sounds like a wonderful idea.
Yeah, and as an option, you could use a tractor and pull the rubber tire roller, but there you've got more equipment than another operator. If it works out, we'll slowly adapt this for additional motor graders around the county. And we have three hundred and twenty miles of gravel road, so it's a major maintenance item for us. Okay, a very nice wider angle picture of the County Road One Forty-Seven Bridge under construction.
Okay, see that again?
I'll pass that around. They have been slowed by the high water and very unusual to have this high water in the Blue Earth River this time of the year. In fact, normally the generators are shut down this time of the year. They've been able to run one or both generators from late summer through now. But it is delaying this project. They're having to build steel copper dam around where the abutments will be. When those are in place, they have to make them watertight, pump the water out, pound in the piling, pour the concrete footing, and then pour the concrete abutment. So, and process the pounding in the sheet pile, they hit some boulders in several places so they can't get them as deep as needed to keep the pile stable. So, they're having to put whalers and rod ties back into the earth. They may have to put steel rings around it. But these are things that bridge constructors run into, they know how to do it, they've got the equipment, they got the materials, they got people that know what they're doing, but it has delayed things. They're still working out there. Okay, our planning and design projects, as we keep our pipeline moving along, the County One Oh Sixty-Six from Good Thunder to County Nine, working on completing design, acquiring right-of-way. We've prioritized some parcels where trees will need to be cut down because they need to be cut by April first because of the longer bat. The Good Thunder end of the project, too, there has been a stormwater drainage problem, so we've been working with the city and state aid on resolving that stormwater drainage. County Twelve from Seventeen to Eighty-Three, we discussed that with the Hoffman and the city agreement. The other agreement we need is on the south end with Mendat. With the roundabout, Mendat has required what's called a Level One review of the design. So, we've received comments from the district here, we're working to resolve those comments. The next step is to send it to the central office in St. Paul, resolve any comments they have, and we're going to get Mendat approval for the roundabout design and go from there to an agreement with Mendat for them to pay a portion of the cost. Okay, Costa One from Trunk Highway Thirty to Good Thunder, we finished the grading work, we're putting together the plan for recycled pavement and the new lift of pavement. County Eight and County Sixteen, which is Stadium Road in Monks in Mankato, there will be a mill and overlay contract and selected curtain gutter replacement and ADA ramps, American Disability Act ramp replacements at the sidewalks to comply with that law.
Do we have that set? I mean, whenever we start doing stadium and stuff like that, we're, sometime we run into the Vikings Training Camp and do we have that timed properly so, you know, issues like that? Because not only does it hinder the construction, but it hinders, obviously, the people going, coming and going from the training camp.
We always consider that as best we can and try to avoid the Vikings Training Camp and MSU starting, and we know that MSU starts a week early to get the kids in to the dorms. So, that does complicate things. These two projects, the city of Mankato will be the lead, will be developing a agreement, cooperative agreement, where they take the lead in those two projects.
So, it'll be on them.
Yes, so can blame them.
They had a look at that this year with Monks.
Yeah, and you can't do anything about the weather.
Yep.
Things like that happen.
So, and then we're doing mapping and design work, we'll be beginning, we'll be beginning design work in County Fourteen, County Four to Trunk Highway Thirty, the next project on our five-year plan. The two minutes maintenance overlays, developing plans for those. It'll be a larger program this year. And then bridges, the state issued local bridge bond fund is depleted. We're hoping the legislature authorizes additional bridge bonds this year. We have several projects ready to go, County Fifty-Two Bridge, southeast corner of the county, the three bridge decks on County Five. And, you know, we advertised those but did not award because of the high cost last year. Our plan there is coordinate with Mendat. Since One Sixty-Nine will be closed, there'll be a lot more traffic on Highway Twenty-two. We don't want to have five closed at the same time. So, we would advertise and award a contract in summer, late summer, for the contractor to start, late fall after One Sixty-Nine is opened again. That actually has several benefits. Their bridge deck replacements, using existing abutments so they can form, insulate for the deck. By doing it late in the year, we avoid the conflict with One Sixty-Nine being closed. We avoid the problem with the long year bat because we need to cut down some trees. And the gravel quarries will be at a lower level of production so it doesn't have as much effect on the businesses down there. It's kind of unusual timing for a project, but it also gives us time to determine if the state will have bonding funds available. They are in poor condition, they need to be done, we need to find a way to get them done.
Will they be a little bit wider to Al? I think you mentioned they might be, because they're pretty narrow, they're not very wide.
Well, two of them are wide, actually, and then one is narrow, which will be wide.
Oh, okay.
Yep. All right, and then the County Road One Eleven, One Forty-Four, and another on One Forty-Four, some old small bridges that would be replaced by big box covers containing unfunded.
All right, any other questions for Al?
Were any of these involved or being built with the sales tax? That, I know we won't be receiving that until, what, April?
Starting will get...
Yeah, that's when, but do we have any plans or anything going right now in conjunction with that, the half percent sales tax?
We're planning on it having a major effect in 2017.
Okay.
Our sixteen program is pretty well set by the items I went through here and consume all of our available funds. Where the concept we discussed in workshop, where in 2017 we'd borrow ahead a little bit and that would allow us, and repay it with this dedicated sales tax fund, that would allow us to proceed with Twelve and with additional rural projects. So, in 2017, we'd see a big bump because of the sales tax with Twelve being built and additional rural projects being built and additional two minutes maintenance overlays. As well as providing matching funding for bridge bonding.
And a quick question, Al, just on the Sixty-Six. Highway Sixty-Six from Good Thunder to Casa Nine, so there won't be any actual breaking ground or construction or anything in this year, 2016, coming from Good Thunder to Nine?
From, in 2016, we will be rebuilding Sixty-Six from Good Thunder to Nine.
Oh, okay, because I see, it says completing design and acquiring right-of-way. I didn't know, are we, we're actually going to do construction then?
Yep.
Okay. I thought that was the plan, but it's changed.
We're getting lined up to do a small contract, probably with quotes, to remove trees prior to April and then do a large contract to do the grading, recycling, new pavement.
Okay, so it's going to be a big, it'll be shut down, we want it or eventually?
Be closed except for local traffic.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we're already hustling. That's our big project to get ready to go next spring.
Yeah, and then we still got to put two minutes overlay, go again.
On the south part, yes.
Section, so we got a lot of work, I mean, it's going to be a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah. Yep, it'd be a very busy summer.
All right.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Al.
Thank you very much, thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
It's a beautiful winter day out there.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's going to get colder, it's going to get colder, too. All I want to know is where we're going for lunch today, I didn't see it on the agenda.
Thought we'd be done too early, but...
Mr. Chair, do you want to keep going or do you want to take a short break?
We got time, why don't we take a couple minute breaks? We got time.
All right, we'll call our meeting back to order. We'll go into some administrative services. County Board minutes.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing seen and on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Bills?
I'll move the bills.
I'll say it. Got a first and a second for the bills, questions?
There's a couple here, let's see.
I went through one with, there's a couple of them with Bob, which he was helpful with yesterday when we met, but I did have one more follow-up one. And probably relates to another one we asked or I asked you, Bob. Because I saw some of them where it was multiple, like a list of things, you know what I mean? Where a credit card is used for making payments on things or purchases. I saw, and I'm sure this is probably the same thing, but on the second week, there's Staples Advantage, and it's got like three hundred and thirty-one, then it's got eleven thousand, three thousand, thirteen thousand, three hundred and three, four thousand. I mean, it adds up to almost thirty-three thousand dollars with the purchases, but they're all boom, 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 boom. You know, I just, I'm just kind of curious what that, what that it's all about. Is that, it's office supplies, I'm sure, and stuff, but...
It's equipment, office equipment for a number of different departments. Some of it's with the South Central Community Based Initiative, the hub over in the government center. So, there was some remodeling work that was done there with office equipment. And then there's some chairs in the IT department as well as conference room material in the human service conference room.
Okay.
So, it's a mixture of, you know, equipment that was purchased, items that were budgeted, typically at the end of the year when the budget still looks like it can handle those types of items, we purchase those.
Okay. And they don't sit on the credit card forever, I mean, they get paid off pretty quickly or...
Well, this particular one is a direct payment to Staples.
Oh.
So, we were invoiced by Staples for those items.
But they're all paid individually? Boom, 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 boom. I mean, they're one, two, three, four, five, so there'll be like six.
Right, and it's based on the department that's put that item in our payment system.
Okay, okay. So, it wasn't credit cards on that one?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the bills?
Regents, let's see, Regents of the University of Minnesota, the first week, contract service, is that for extension or something?
Yeah, that's our quarterly payment for extensions.
I got the other one I answered, got answered here, so that's all I have.
All right, if there's no other questions or comments, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Human Resources.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number six in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just a couple of informational items there. First one is that we've initiated recruitment to refill the... recruitment to refill the park supervisor and then we have completed filling out a position for a custody officer, so refilled that position.
I met him this morning, he seemed like a real nice guy.
Really?
Oh, Andrew?
Yep.
Oh, is he over here at the courthouse?
Yep. He met with me and Will.
Oh, okay.
Seemed like a nice guy.
Any questions, comments?
I was just curious, who's going to be on the interviews and when they finally get to interviews for the park supervisor, who, who sits in on those, Bob?
I would guess it would be the county engineer as well as the assistant county engineer, Chad Wilde.
Okay, so Chad and Al would be?
That would be my guess, I haven't, I haven't asked him directly, but Chad directly supervises the park supervisor, so I'm sure he'll be involved.
And we don't have HR or anybody involved with that and they don't sit in on them?
Sometimes it kind of depends on the department whether they ask for HR representation as well, sometimes we'll have Heidi sit in in a department interview.
I know, and we discussed it once, but I just want to throw it out there so you guys know that there's been discussion, but from my part, from my side is that I think we've got so many parks here that I almost thought we should have a separate department of parks and that it would be, that the park supervisor would be a department head and I mean, that's just something we could look at somewhere down the road if everybody felt it was necessary, but I'll tell you, we got a lot more management things going on within that whole realm, they work well within public works, don't get me wrong, but I just think that, that I could see where they could be at their own little department head, you know, we've got, even our veteran services down here, you know, we got two staff in that office needs a department head. Park, parks supervisor, there's a lot of responsibility that goes on with that job and overseeing about 15 of our properties that are parks and I could see where that could be a department head position, but just a discussion item.
It's a good concept, except that really in the winter months.
I know, that's the thing.
Dean comes and works, works directly in the, in the highway department and that's, so that's, you know, our, our parks really are a seasonal thing.
You're right.
So, you know, when it comes down to the winter months, you know, the, you can't lay them off.
Right.
So he has to be a type of person that can work with the rest of public works on different projects, so.
Okay, any other questions, comments, move on?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number seven in your packet is kind of an annual memo about crop damage payment schedule, we do discuss this with the extension director to come up with our estimated yields and price per bushel, we'll remind the board that these rates can be adjusted should we see some changes in the commodity prices or estimated yields, but this is crop damages that we would use in our public drainage system to reimburse landowners if we have to do some work there.
Do we have much, just a question, well, I can move it, I guess.
I got a motion to approve, we got a second.
Do you move it for the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second it.
I was just curious how many payments we ever make on oats or wheat, I just.
You know, I haven't seen any specifically, but they might be out there.
Historically, you realize that Blue Earth County had started out with a lot of wheat and no corn or soybeans at all, no soybeans at all.
But I think there is some rotation of crops that might bring those into play at times, even though they're smaller.
I have seen them, drives around the country, you have seen them.
Small fields, I've seen small fields of oats.
But you're right, there's not a lot, I mean, we are really a soybean and corn county, but.
You see some, and like I said, it used to be, but yeah, years, years ago.
Not like the county I grew up in, Wilken County, which is, we really rotate the small grains in there, but.
I think one of the Hollerick families out there by Good Thunder does small fields of oats and.
They do have oats out there.
Because they make, they grind up flour.
Oh yeah, that's right.
They make flour, their own, their own flour, is that right?
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, it's not huge, I mean, so these are for crop damages if you have significant damage or something.
Right, I was thinking there wasn't.
And I think some people grow it for feed, you know, it's good, it's good for horses.
Oats is, yeah, oats definitely, all right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Publication bids.
Yes, item number eight in your packet is the 2016 publisher bids, this is a requirement of state statute that we publish bids to then publish things like our delinquent tax list, our Board of Commissioner and Board of Equalization summaries, any legal notices as well as financial statement for the county. And so we've indicated here the bids that were received and the recommended bids to be accepted by the board, so those items with an asterisk on the list are those that were recommending be approved by the board.
Can I, can I ask one question before?
Sure.
The very last one is insertion rate for the annual financial statement, is it required by law that we, we put, we use both of them?
I believe it is, yes.
Yep, the statute states that you have to put it in two papers.
Okay, that's, that's what.
Right below it says.
Then I would, then I would move the bids.
Second. Do we do them all at one time or do we do them separately in the past? I know we've done them separately.
We've done it both ways.
Okay, so just, there's a motion to accept all the bids, the recommended bids?
Yep.
Okay, and do I have a second? Second, discussion?
Question of Bob, I was just wondering, Bob, so who, who do we have that does these? I mean, they must call and ask, what, what would you charge us if we do this, I mean, do they?
We do a formal bid, so we do publish a legal bid notice in the newspaper to get these bids.
Oh, really? Are we required to do that, I mean, are we required?
Yes, yes.
Because, I mean, the Free Press, we would want to go with regardless, I would think.
Well, it certainly has broadest distribution.
That's what I mean, it covers our whole region right here, Mankato Free Press does.
No, it doesn't cover the southern part, there's a lot of people that don't read the Free Press and.
I mean, it's one of the papers.
Oh, it's one of the papers.
The first choice for, for the majority of our population, you know what I mean? So I didn't know, but I'm just wondering, so they, they just have a rate, they just go by that schedule?
They respond, we put out a bid notice, a request with these items and they provide a response and so that's handled out of the administration office.
Okay. Chair?
And I know, I know what you were going to ask too, Bob, earlier, I mean Vance, if online versions count at all or if, you know, those kind of things that make it a little bit easier, you know, like let's just say we've got Joe Steck with the Mankato Times or online versions, I don't know if they count, I think it has to be printed, doesn't it? I'm not sure if that's been acceptable yet to put it on.
That's a little bit unclear, you know, this is an older statute that we're complying with, but yeah, I don't know if we got a bid from just an online newspaper, whether that would meet the requirements or not.
Okay.
You know, I've, every year I have come out and stated my dissatisfaction with, with these bids and especially now this year, since every one of these statements we put on our website. And in the past, there was one that was missing that we didn't put on, but every one of these we put on and I, and I would probably, well, I know that there are more wifi across Blue Earth County than people that read the Mankato Free Press. And there certainly is more wifi across the county than people that read the Maple River Messenger. In fact, I don't know how many people from the city of Mankato do that. It just would make sense, and it's a state law, so we have nothing we can do about this, but it would really make sense to change the law statewide to give the counties that have the ability to put this online and put a notice out to, in the papers that these, this information is online and the, the website to go to, to, to reach it. It would save thousands of dollars, I believe, in talking to Bob, I believe that we spend close to $8,000 a year on this. I talked to Ryan, administrator in Nicola County, he said they spend up to $40,000.
Oh, you're kidding.
That's what he told me.
Because they have a lot of smaller rural papers?
I don't know, but.
Must more print over there, I bet.
But it's, but in doing so, and, and of course, you know, with a $94 million budget, $8,000 isn't, doesn't seem like a lot, but we, really for taxpayers and the ability for people to get the information, it just doesn't make sense that we even do this yearly, we, we really should be able to by state, but it's something, I believe AMC has been contacted and I think we're not going to talk about it this year, but possibly next year we can bring this up, saying this is one of those things that, an old antiquated law that needs to be changed.
Yeah.
Because with the websites and everything, it's easier for somebody if they're interested to get it online than it is to look for a newspaper that has it.
I agree.
In saying so, I'm still going to vote for this, just because I know by state law we have to, but I'm just, I'm just telling you, they don't, I, I have an issue with this, I'll, I'll make sure I send my, my annual emails to my legislators and, and representatives, but it's, I also know that the newspapers have a very strong lobbying effort and evidently they feel this is very important, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. 2016 bounties.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number nine in your packet is a resolution authorizing a bounty for golfers, both striped golfers and pocket golfers, we brought forward a resolution with the same rates for 2016 that have been in place for prior years, but I understand there might be some interest in adjusting those rates and so I bring it forward for your consideration today.
Okay, comments, questions, want to move this to get it?
Move, do prove.
Second.
No, I just handed out an article from the, Dan Lenahan from the Free Press, I got it off Associated Press from 2009, just to show, and I think it's been a long time since we've adjusted the rates, I don't know when they were last changed, many years ago, you know, it's been like this, I thought for simplicity it might be all right to, friendly amendment to change it to just a buck a tail regardless of what kind of a gopher it is. What happens is that the money goes to the township, they, they have to give us a record of what they've done and they sometimes chart, they'll, they'll sometimes pay two or three dollars per gopher if they want to get rid of them in their, their particular area, they have a problem with them or something and, and, and so this helps reimburse their expenses for paying their local residents that, that take on some of these bounties and I just thought it might be easier just to say, let's just call it a buck for, regardless of what kind of a gopher comes in, but it's up to you guys if you want to entertain that idea to make it simpler.
Are you asking to amend it for a dollar?
Yeah, just to a dollar, instead of having the 50 cent one in there, just make it a dollar.
Okay.
Regardless what kind of gopher they, they are trapping.
Somebody want a second, Drew's amendment?
I don't care either way, but. Hasn't changed for many, many years. Bob's kind of, Bob's kind of getting nervous over that extra $13 in our budget this year.
It was $129 that we paid out in 2015.
I wonder how many were striped and how many were.
Do you have that breakdown, Bob?
I actually do not have that breakdown.
I'd be disappointed if you did.
Maybe do an audit before we know about our budget.
Oh, Drew, okay.
I just thought it'd be easier and also it ups the ability for the township to just recoup a little bit more money, if there's a 50 cent ones, it's a buck on them now. What happens is they might pay two dollars, okay? And whatever they get reimbursed, it just helps offset their costs, so it's actually a benefit to, it's a benefit to the township by raising it to a buck on that 50 cent.
You're saying a bunch of them get, try, pay two bucks?
Some of them do, yeah, some, some counties that, I took, looked online, pay three, but then they only get a buck from the county, see?
No, doesn't make much difference.
Probably, I'll, I'll second it.
Got a second for the amendment?
It's holiday season.
I, I don't know if our budget can handle that.
Oh, come on, Vance.
All right, let's vote on the amendment.
Okay.
To change it from 50 cents to a dollar on the, is it the striped one?
Which one is it, the striped?
I don't remember, I don't have it paid.
The striped was, yeah, was 50.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now we can go back to the original motion of the bounties, any other discussion?
I, just one thing, we're not actually correct, it's not a striped gopher, it's a 13 line ground squirrel.
Oh, what?
You're probably right.
I know I'm right.
So did you want to make an amendment?
I would, I would make an amendment that we change it from striped gopher to 13 line ground squirrel.
Now, does that follow the state law?
What?
I know, that's the thing, this state statute.
Of course, you, you made the amendment, I'll second it. And then, then the question is, does that follow state law?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
But what we could do is say and/or 13 line ground squirrel, you know what I mean? Because there, there might be two varieties of striped gophers in this, in this region, I'm not sure, I haven't done that analysis.
Gophers, excuse me, I'm sorry, Commissioner and Chair, the statute reads gophers or ground squirrels.
Well, then you, as a friendly amendment to that, you should put gophers or.
Well, then, then Will is absolutely correct in his amendment.
It has to be 13 line ground squirrels.
Yes, so we.
Okay.
Put in, I'll second, or you already seconded it.
I already seconded it.
You already seconded it.
According to the statute, it has to be the feet and not the tail, there are some counties that have applied for a variance and they, they are allowing just the tails for counting, but.
It doesn't say anything about tails or feet here.
No, I know, but in the statute it talks about feet.
It doesn't matter to us, Commissioner, because the township.
They, they, they oversee it.
They are the ones that oversee it, we reimburse the township, so we don't.
Okay, that sounds good.
We don't oversee what they require for proof.
Okay.
You'll, you'll remain the gopher tail and feet counter, Jesse?
Um, I process the reimbursements.
Are you serious?
All right, we got an amendment on the table again, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. I'm calling the question on the last one, so the original amendment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
You run a big ship.
I'm proud of you, Mr. Chair, starting the new year right.
2016 loan interest.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 10 is a memo regarding the small cities revolving loan and ditch balance loan interest rates, we have a policy that's been in place that says the county board reviews the interest rate each year, the interest rate shall be a half percent less than the prime rate on the date of this meeting and shall not exceed 8% or be less than 4%, given where the prime rate is currently at, we're still recommending the rate remain at 4% in 2016.
Move, prove.
Second, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item number 11 in your packet is a letter from the state auditor outlining audit engagement, it does outline the responsibilities of the county as well as the state auditor in performing our audit for our 2015 financial report and so we're recommending approval of this engagement letter.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item number 12 is a couple of tobacco license renewals, these were renewals that we expected in December, but they arrived after our last board meeting and so bringing it here for the board's consideration today to approve these tobacco licenses for the city of Mapleton as well as Dietz Foods in Mapleton.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item number 13 in your packet is a violent crime enforcement grant extension, this is the grant that provides some funding support to our Minnesota River Valley Drug Task Force, this is basically extending the gra, grant into 2016 at the same amount that was received for 2015, so we're recommending approval of this grant agreement.
Motion?
Move, prove. Second.
Any discussion?
I got a question.
Very nice, go ahead Drew.
Yeah, this is just an extension, I know on the current grant status that we have for this and it goes to our drug task force, I did go online just to kind of look over some of the details and there's a, there's a violent crime, you know, it's called a committee or task force that helped initiate some of this in the state of Minnesota and I know most of it, it sounded to me after reading through all the, all the information, related a lot to gang activity, you know what I mean, and, and selling drugs was part of the gang activity that goes on, I mean, that they, they obtain. And selling drugs was part of the gang activity that goes on, I mean, that they, they obtain funds through selling drugs. And I just don't know how much, really in our region here, I'd like to have more education someday, or the board be educated, I, I'm just not on how much gang activity goes on in our region right here. And, and I'm not saying it's a total inappropriate use of the grant, but most of the grantees, I think, were larger counties, metro counties and that sort of thing. And I know we have some problems here, but I just didn't know, you know? Just to get some more feedback on how it was utilized and...
Sure.
I would ask you to contact, you know, the folks on our sheriff's department that are in, in the task force.
Yeah.
I think they could give you some really good information on, on what kinda problems we do have here in Blue Earth County. There is, we definitely have gang issues in the city of Mankato in Blue Earth County. That's, it's been going on for thirty-some years, you know, back when Will and I were working, and it's no less now than it was back then. And, but, but it's, it's always good to get some good information and education, and I'm, I'm sure everybody on, on the sheriff's department, anybody, you talk to Mike or Brad or anybody on there, they would be more than willing to, you know, fill you in and let you know what, what's going on here in the county and the surrounding area. It'd be good, it'd be good for you, it'd be good for me to, to, in fact, I do stop in there and find out about stuff, but that's always a good educational part.
Well, it impacts what Pat talks about out here, I mean, you know, he's talking about the data, and and I, believe it or not, across the country, drug arrests are still very high, extremely high. And it's one of the number one reasons why our prisons are being overcrowded, and there's a trend, there's a trend towards trying to weed through who's really the more hardcore individuals from those who are just, you know, caught up in a system that's kind of unhealthy, and not, not necessarily making them into criminals, but trying to help them with their lives instead of... And so I just think there's a gray area there, where I think it, like I agree with you, that we need some education on this, and and, and we can be progressive in our own county to, to help people who actually need help versus criminalizing them and and seeing all these prosecutions that are going on within our county.
Well, the drug court has done a good job of that.
And that, they've helped.
That's why we have the drug court.
Yep.
Yep.
Any comment? Yeah, Pat, you got anything to add?
Well, we have, we have a Drug Task Force board meeting later this, this week, and I can talk to Lieutenant Wersel. I know that there's been various times that there's been presentations given on the, related to gang activity and whatnot, so if you want some additional information on that, I can help facilitate that.
Yeah. Thanks, Pat.
Education's always a good idea.
All right, any other comments or questions on the grant? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Large Assembly Permit.
Mr. Chair. Second.
Well, just a...
Permit for the...
Go ahead, Bob.
I wanna do my job, though.
Talking about the demolition derby?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Unless there's something else to bring in front of this board, I have already checked off my agenda.
Let's see, we've got...
I guess I would like to, I'd, I'd like to thank everyone for the year that you gave me. I, I feel pretty blessed to have the board I have, or I had this past year, and the employees that we have, or staff that we have for Blue Earth County. I consistently, the staff and the employees of Blue Earth County make our job easier because they do such a good job and take away a lot of the headaches from us. But thank you very much for all of the support that all of you gave me this last year, and I, I hope I can support Kip as much as he supported me this last year. Thank you.
Thanks, Vance. Thanks a lot, Vance.
Oh, yeah.
And one, the last page there says parliamentary procedure. I just had one question or and/or comment about that. Sometimes I sense, and it's, me too, we get confused a little bit on one, one issue, and that is when we've got staff before us here presenting, it's okay for us to ask the staff directly any question before anything's moved or anything. It's okay to explore it and talk to them and do whatever we want, as long as we're not talking amongst each other. If we wanna talk amongst each other, from what I understand, and you can correct me, Bob, or Jesse, or Pat, is that then we have to move the piece in order to have a discussion?
Amongst ourselves.
Yeah, but it's okay, like if Vance had a question of Al, or I did, we can ask him questions without moving it. Do you know what I mean? We can, it's okay to explore, ask questions, get information, whatever we want, and maybe...
Kinda like I did with publication bids.
Yeah.
Cause I asked Bob a question about that one bid before we even made a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And sometimes I feel like we have confusion in that area, I think.
Yeah, if it's a public, like, when it's a public hearing or portion, yeah, then, then you'd have to, but I, I know what you're saying.
We do the same thing to Phil, too. I mean, we ask questions as they go through.
Yeah, we can ask him a question about a program without having to move it.
Keep going.
Yeah, but if we wanna talk to each other, I guess we're supposed to move something.
Right.
So it's on the table, it's, we're actually, it's an open motion, you know, that's, that's what I understand. I just thought it'd be good to discuss it.
Yeah, I think the chair actually has a responsibility of kind of acknowledging the motion, and that opens it up for discussion. So the safest route is always to get a motion on the table, then any discussion is fine. If it's a clarification from a staff person that might influence whether you make a motion or not, I can certainly understand where that would have value to you as board members.
And that's where I came from on the publication portion.
Yeah.
If it's gonna lead to discussion, I think a motion on the table helps with that.
Okay. Well, and as chair this year, I guess it would be helpful to me, though, that if we do start those one-on-one questions, that it doesn't turn into a discussion, cause then I will make sure we stop that. But if it's just a direct question to the staff, well, we could allow that, and then, but as soon as it starts getting Nelson, he's asking a question, and he's asking a question, we're either gonna have to stop it or get a motion.
Even of each other.
Or each other, or if all of a sudden, four of us are asking the staff, and it starts to turn into a discussion.
That's, that's...
A clarification or a question, a quick question for one, you know, maybe two of us, but if all of a sudden, we're all asking questions, we're having the full discussion at the end of the day, we're gonna kill it.
And especially if we know we're gonna move it anyway. If it's a topic that's maybe sensitive, we're not sure we're even gonna get a motion on it.
Right, that would make more sense.
Even though it's on the packet, doesn't mean we have to, we don't have to make a motion on any of these.
So if we're gonna do that, I mean, that's fine, but we need to make them direct.
Yeah.
Clarification.
We know we're gonna do it anyway.
Well, but yeah, if you know you're gonna do it, but if you wanna ask a question or two, but as soon as I see it start going to, now, now Mark's asking a question, and Will's asking a question, that, we're gonna cut that off and get a motion on the table.
That's why it usually ends up that you get the motion right off, but I, I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying, I'm just saying that's not why it ends up.
It's always good to give this out in the open in the first meeting of the year, though.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And especially try, try to have an understanding of the personality of the chair.
You gotta give the chair, you have to give the chair...
Bring shock collars for everybody. All right, thank you, Drew, on that.
I know, I know where you can get a taser.
I have two.
All right, look for a motion to adjourn, then.
So moved.
Seconds. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.